Okay, we're on. Okay, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Fund for October 6, 2015. And the first order of business is a request for a donation to the Milton Residents Fund, which we typically do annually, and currently it's in the amount of $15,000.
I'll move that we approve a request from the Milton Residents Fund in the amount of $15,000 to give needy residents utility, water, and rental assistance.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, and I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have adjourned, so now I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for October 6, 2015. And the first order of business is just to follow up on last -- on our last meeting with respect to airplane noise. And I first want to start out by saying, and first I want to thank David for chairing the meeting in my absence, but sometimes when you do these meetings, you wish you could have a do-over. And that was certainly one of them when the email was read regarding Cindy last week. It was -- we had no knowledge that it was going to happen. Sometimes, in the heat of a meeting, you don't realize. You're trying to look at your agenda, manage the schedule, and look at the crowd, and you don't -- all of a sudden, you realize what's being said. And I'm sure that's what happened. But, you know, certainly, there was -- we would never intentionally do anything to embarrass Cindy, and that was certainly not our intent. And, you know, for that, because I think it did, and for that, we all sincerely apologize to Cindy. Cindy's a -- I've known Cindy for five years. Cindy is a kind, good, and very, very intelligent person. She works harder than anybody else I know, and she does have the full support of the Board of Selectmen with respect to the CIC and the airplane noise. So, that being said, I also want to mention that David O'Dean, who's been our alternate CIC rep for over nine years now, and probably has spent more time on the issue of airplane noise than, I think, anybody else in the town. He's got incredible knowledge. I also know that he is a good person, and I don't think would intentionally do anything to harm anybody. David feels passionate about what he does and about airplane noise, and there clearly is a difference of opinion. And one thing we're going to try and do is get David, Cindy, and the Chair of the CIC together with myself in a meeting and kind of talk out all these issues, and hopefully go forward with a stronger and better CIC. So, that being said, let's see, we have a...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I received an email from Cindy Christensen today, and I would like to read it into the record.
Okay.
If I could. Again, this is from Cindy Christensen. She said, "I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their unanimous support of me as Milton Logan CIC representative. I look forward to continuing my work on the airplane noise and pollution problems and representing and advocating for the citizens of Milton on this very important issue. Thank you, Cindy Christensen." So, I wanted to read that into the record as well.
Okay. So, there's a few other things that I guess we'd like to talk about. One thing is, and we're not going to do much with it tonight, but we are considering looking at our own committee. There's a couple of things we're going to do. First of all, we're going to -- I don't know if now the scope or the charge of the committee is the correct term, but we're certainly going to better define what their role is. And we'll be discussing that later on in this meeting, in terms of making it a real defined role, so that committee kind of knows where, you know, what it's supposed to be doing, and has a course that it can stay on. We're also considering, but we won't take any action tonight with respect to that, the composition of that committee, and may make some changes there. But we will discuss that later. So, I don't know. Katie, do you want to talk a little bit? Because you've been involved in more of this than I have, in terms of some of the things that the Board has done with respect to airplane noise. I know, you know, we clearly have been talking considerably with Town Council about litigation. We've been talking about that in executive session, and rightly so. But on more than one occasion, we've had lengthy discussions about what we can do, how we can do it, when we should do it. And those conversations continue.
Sure. You want me to talk just about that aspect of it?
Sure.
Okay. And I thought your comments, Tom, were well said, and I agree with them wholeheartedly, and have talked with Cindy, and conveyed my thoughts to her, and apology to her as well. As far as legal action goes, and we've had some questions about this, and as you said, we've had discussions in executive session, what I think the public should know is that back in June, we filed a comment letter. And that's more than just a letter asking for some kind of relief. That's the town's official comment to a regulatory proposal regarding the 4L RNAVs. Currently, we have three of these RNAVs, and for people watching at home, think of it as almost a superhighway in the sky. It's a concentrated flight path. This is a nationwide problem, as we all know, but people at home may not -- some of them may not know what the problem here is. Over the recent years, at airports around the country, the FAA has been, for efficiency purposes and other purposes that they cite, they've been, instead of having a wide dispersed area where flights can come in, they're being concentrated in a narrow path. And that narrow path is going over Milton, and has been now for some time, and is causing noise almost for 18 hours a day sometimes. And it's one flight right after another. And as Marie and I both said, just driving down 93 Southbound at night from Boston to Milton, you just see the white lights. It's one plane right after another lined up right over town. So, obviously, we've been working with our legislative delegation, and Tom, you might want to mention Congressman Lynch's news the other day. I'll leave that to you. But in addition to really trying to work the political solution here, which is probably the best solution, this is really, this is a federal problem, so it needs a congressional solution. But what the town did was, when the -- because we have three RNAVs currently over Milton, there's been a proposal made within the past year to have two more RNAVs over Milton, which would be a much larger problem than what we already have, believe it or not. And back in May, some of us went to, with Cindy Christensen, with Senator Joyce, with Representative Timolty, we went to a meeting that the FAA had. We filed comments, our Town Council wrote the letter. And what we did was, we requested certain relief. Even though we had to target our comments to 4L, we asked that that not be implemented, and we gave a number of reasons, environmental and other reasons, and quality of life, and impact on people on the ground. We also injected into that the 4R problem that's facing East Milton. And there was some debate over whether to address 4R in that letter, but this Board did insist that that's where the current problem is, and that's what we -- and so we did want to address that. So, we've asked for relief from the 4R runway also. Right now, we filed at the end of June, a lot of residents of the town filed comments or signed a petition. So, all of that is on record. The FAA has not yet taken any action on that, and until they take final action, we're still in the so-called period of review that follows the end of the comment period, in which there's really no action that can be taken on the 4L proposal. So, until something is decided finally, one way or the other, there's really no follow-up that we can do on that letter that we filed. But the letter is on the town website, and if people would like to read it, if you go to the airplane noise section of the town website, you'll find the Selectmen's letter. The Board of Health filed a separate letter, and that's also on the town website. But the Board has talked in executive session about what some of our other options are. And it's in the public's interest that those conversations happen in executive session, not in a public session, for a very simple reason, and that's that we don't want the FAA to know what our strategy might be. They don't tell us their strategy. We don't want them knowing what our strategy may be. So, those discussions don't take place at a public meeting, and that might lead to the belief that the Board's not considering that, or not taking any action. And what we do want Milton residents to know is that nothing is off the table, and we're continuing to work with Town Council to explore all of our options. We can report that our Town Council has been in touch with the FAA, with Congressman Lynch's staff, and with the attorneys who represent the City of Phoenix, Arizona plaintiffs. So, there has been outreach. There's a lot of research being done, and these are complicated issues of federal law that are not easy. But so, in terms of the -- I think that's about all that we can say at this time.
Right.
People should know nothing's off the table, and I think there's been a concern that maybe that we're not thinking along those lines. We want to assure people that we are, but that there's a limited amount that we can say.
Right. But we also did ask Town Council about perhaps joining in in lawsuits, and the issue becomes, do we have standing in those cases? I'm not a lawyer, but understanding is, you've got to figure out whether they're going to let you join that lawsuit or not, and you have to have some kind of standing, is it?
Yes. Well, standing is a legal doctrine, but I think we probably shouldn't get too far into that.
Right.
So, we're exploring all options.
We are, yeah. And we certainly have asked Town Council.
And we need to -- and some of them are different. As Cindy Christensen said last week when she explained the Blans 3, there's a -- right now, we're talking about flights under 3,000 feet. Some of these other airports that have the problems with the litigation, it's, to simplify it, it's for a new system that's been put in place that may be coming to Logan at some point for flight for over 3,000 feet. So, there are some differences, and there's -- but we're keeping our options open.
But I also want to add that I want to thank a lot of the residents who have taken their time to voice their passion about this subject, because it is a real subject that we take very seriously. And we've received a lot of emails and phone calls, and we emphatically hear you and believe in what you're saying. And we'll continue to work as a group as we discuss our next steps and our strategies moving forward.
Right. There is one other thing I want to mention, too. I'll give Phil Joe Hennig actually credit for it. He brought to our attention that there was a New York congressman who filed or sponsored some legislation to transfer control or responsibility for, I guess, noise pollution, for lack of a better term, back to the EPA and away from the FAA, which would be great because when you think about it, there's kind of a conflict of interest with the FAA's main purpose is to make the airlines, well, safety, speed, efficiency, and the byproduct of that may be noise, but, you know, they're kind of, you know, at opposite ends of the spectrum. So, we would certainly like to see that. We did reach out to Congressman Lynch's office and informed him about the legislation. Whether he knew it or not, I don't know, but we'll watch that closely.
Do you want to mention the Timolty and Lynch?
Yes, yes. I think probably most everybody knows about it because it's been on all over Facebook, but...
For the people who aren't on Facebook.
But, yes. Representative Walt Timolty and Congressman Lynch did sit down with the Chairman of the FAA, and apparently had a very good meeting. And he has promised to sit down or have the local officials of FAA sit down with residents of the town of Milton to discuss the issue. So, that's encouraging. I mean, they already said once before they were going to do it and kind of reneged, but I don't know that we've ever talked or anybody's ever talked to anybody that high at FAA in the past. So, that is encouraging, and hopefully that will happen shortly.
Yeah. That's good news for Milton.
Yes.
It's been a long time coming and taken a lot of effort by Congressman Lynch, so I thank him and Representative Timolty for having that meeting and pursuing this as hard as they have.
I'd like to thank them both as well. They've worked really hard on this on our behalf, and I think that they're making some good headway on it.
Okay. And, you know, and just to follow up, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail unless anybody wants to, but the Board has taken a lot of other actions, you know, since 2012, 2013. Previous Boards have taken action in the past, you know, back in the early part of the decade, you know, when airplane noise got bad as well. But we have taken quite a bit of action. It just, you know, we've reached out to other communities. I think we've probably reached out to every community in the South Shore, including Belmont at one point in time. Maybe we should do it again, but the last time we reached out, there was absolutely no interest by anybody. Randolph, Canton, Braintree, nobody. They say, they all said the same thing. "We don't get any complaints. We have no interest." So, but, you know, maybe it makes sense to reach out again. I don't know.
I think it does. I think we should try every method possible.
Yep.
And I think it would be in our best interest to go ahead and reach out to those communities. I think a little ways back, Congressman Lynch had advised us to reach out to Hull and to reach out to a lot of the affected communities and try to galvanize some support. So, I think, you know, we should try that.
Yeah. I mean, it can't hurt to try it again, see what happens, but...
Let me just close the loop on Cindy Christensen. Just, I mean, the Town Administrator read that email from Cindy, and I know that's -- they're having questions about whether Cindy would be reappointed as our CIC representative. And there are no appointments or reappointments on our agenda for tonight. There are some for October 20.
Yes.
And Cindy's would be on that agenda. She was only appointed in May. She does have the support of the Board. And so, I certainly intend to vote to reappoint Cindy, and I know she's got our support. So, we may just, I just thought we might want to -- that's, I think, what really Cindy's email was directed at.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll move on with the agenda. Item three, you can just pass over with review of approval of meeting minutes, and they're on and to approve tonight. Enforce confirmation of future meeting dates. And we have right now October 20, 26, and 27. If necessary, some of those dates are the fall time meeting, yes. And I assume everybody's fine with those.
Yep, fine with me.
Yes.
Okay. Item five is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
I'll move that we approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six is citizen speak. So, would anybody like to address the Board?
Sure, I'd like to. My name is Jeff Moore.
Could you come up, please?
Where do I begin?
Just come up and say it at the --
Make the phone.
And just state your name again for the record, and...
Sure. Jeffrey Moore from Dudley Lane. I've moved to Milton just recently, about a year ago, and I just wanted to, you know, formally voice my complaint about the airplane noise and the pollution resulting from that. You know, we get about a flight a minute, a flight every minute and a half over my house at 2,000 feet. It's very loud, as well as, you know, causes a vibration, and of course, there's particulate matter from the exhaust, of course, falling on our neighborhood. And the question I have is, you know, we've talked about reaching out to other communities, and I'm expecting they're not complaining because the planes are probably at 3,000 or 3,500 feet over their communities. Have we reached out to some of the schools in the Milton area, like Milton Academy and others? Because, you know, of course, the risk here is not just noise disturbance, it's a serious health risk from the particulate matter. And, you know, I think parents at places like Milton Academy and other schools would be concerned if their kids were in the direct flight path of, I think, in June, 6,400 flights came over the school this past June. So, you know, it's a significant health risk.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody has, but we certainly can. I suspect that, again, the noise part of it, because the windows are closed most of the time in those schools, is not as huge an issue as it is to, you know, residents that would have their windows open.
I know when we submitted our comment letter on the 4L proposal, we highlighted the fact that there are schools...
Yes, we did.
Other senior citizen housing, different hospital, different institutions in town that are impacted. I don't recall, I would have to ask some people who are involved, and I don't recall if we specifically reached out to them, but we have highlighted that for the FAA and Massport that that's...
Right. And I think getting as many people, you know, fighting for this...
It's a good idea.
And, you know, obviously, there, you know, some significant assets that you might leverage with the trustees and the parents of Milton Academy, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hi, Tim.
Hi.
Hi, Tim.
Thank you all. Tim Kernan, I'm president of the Brush Hill Area Neighborhood Association, and I was glad to hear your prior comments about the airplane noise activities you're up to. It seems that western end of Brush Hill Road is sort of silently represented, and I just want to let you know that we are adamantly concerned with what's going on, and do appreciate your work on our behalf. A lot of the press seems to be talking about East Milton. We understand that as well. But I just want to let you know that we're here, we care. Just today, I've gotten calls from people who, we sent an email out to the membership, and I get people calling me saying, "Yes, this is a problem. They are concerned about these planes flying right over their house, 3,000 feet's a little close." This summer, a gentleman was telling me that he's concerned about the particulate settlement on his house. He can see it. He has to wash it off every couple of months, but it's a serious issue, and I know you're behind it, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Scott Johnson. I'm the president of the Hillside Neighborhood Association. I'm here on behalf of the HNA and my wife, just to, again, check in about the airplane noise. Thank you very much for taking this seriously. Very much appreciate that. My wife is an ophthalmologist. She probably does 40 surgeries a month, and she tries to have a very regimented schedule before a day in the OR, and when the planes are flying, you know, 10, even after 11, and then at 5:15 in the morning, it's sort of disruptive. So, for sure, very much appreciate the efforts, and anything we can do at HNA to support your efforts, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's to Stone Hill Lane.
I'm Lisa Leo Erkovic. I live at 26 Walcott Road off Brush Hill. And I've never done this, but I was told I could say, speak about anything.
Sure.
I live across the street from a unit called Work Inc. It's, I believe, a nonprofit...
Yes.
...which the taxpayers paid $100,000 to run a sewer line up Walcott Road so that they could connect in and make it more desirable for them to build and buy the property. And what we, in the neighborhood, got in return for that was a building with obnoxious bright lights, a giant parking lot, and a little grass, and not one bit of landscaping or buffer zone or anything. And I'm looking at the hospice center that was built, which looks beautiful, and I'm saying, "Why is this place allowed to operate in a neighborhood that has beautiful landscaping and trees and just plunk their place in and just operate there like that? I just don't know how that happened." And the lighting's obnoxious, and, you know, I just, I don't know how that happens. The second thing I wanted to mention was the issue of, you know, just Brush Hill Road in general. Just, I've been there 18 years, and it's alarming to see all of the properties being just turned into condos. First Fuller Village was three homes, now it's thousands of people living there. And of course, we have Curry, which to me is a wonderful neighbor. I mean, they work well with us as the neighbors and maintain their property, and it's a wonderful neighbor, although it's multifamily or, you know, it's an operating business. And now we have the new condominiums being built over the 36 units at the rectory, and it's just chipping away one property at a time. The whole neighborhood is just being rezoned, and I'm concerned about it. And so, I decided to come today to speak about those two main problems in our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Roxanne.
Hi.
Hi, Roxanne.
Hi, Roxanne.
I had to bring my glasses because I can barely read what I have here. It's a little bit all over the place, but... So, my name's Roxanne Musto. I live on 101 Milton Street in Milton, and I'm here, I'm a member of your Board of Health, Chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. And I'm here because I want to talk about a couple of things that have come up. So, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee that I'm current chair represents all of Milton, not East Milton, not West, but everybody in town, central, west, east. And people that know me, know my character, know that I represent everyone in town. I try to do my job as best as I can. You know, in my job professionally, I'm a nurse practitioner. I don't pick and choose who I represent and take care of. I try to represent, take care of everyone. And I know that my fellow Board members are the same on that committee, so I just wanted to say that. I did want to say that a couple of things. You know, I am a lifelong resident of Milton, grew up here, and lately, I've just been a little bit disappointed and upset that the airplane noise issue has become more of a personal attack on elected people that are trying to do their job and trying to do the best they can. And as someone who grew up in the town and loves the town, I find it very upsetting. People that know me know that I've been active on many organizations in town, volunteered a lot, and I do it because I enjoy it, and I try to be fair. And it's upsetting to see some of these negative comments that have been out on, you know, different social media, and I hope that that stops because I think that we can't get anywhere if we don't work together. One thing I did want to also mention, as I mentioned to you now, I live on Milton Street. I actually grew up right next door to where I live. And when I grew up in town, there weren't as many airplanes as there are now. They weren't low like they are now. I, myself, have called Massport multiple times. I have a file probably this thick I could have brought in with me to prove that I've called. And so, I've done my part as well, and I know that a lot of people here have done that. People that have come last week have done the same thing. So, it is a frustrating experience. But I do know that people here are working hard on the issue. I know the Board of Health has worked hard on this issue, and we're listening to what people are saying. And again, I just want to express that we all should be working together. We have to work with our congressional leaders here, and we represent everybody in the town. And so, although one group of people may be more verbal, as Tim said, we're all really bothered by this, you know. I know where I live, for instance, we have multiple plane routes that go over us. So, it's, you know, anywhere from 5:00 AM in the morning till 11 or 12 at night, and that's what happens with a lot of people all over town. So, just to sort of express that we appreciate all that you're doing, the Board of Health is doing their part, and just to, you know, stay aware that we're here to represent everybody and help the entire town. And really, the message should be no more planes over Milton, and what we have now should really be less and dispersed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Anyone else? Okay, move on. Thank you. Okay, we're going to have a conference with Chief Richard Wells over the Traffic Commission. Chief Wells?
I've never known him to be the chicken. Okay, well, see, on a bus, he gives it up.
Chief, yeah?
So, the recommendations that are here before you tonight are based upon a Traffic Commission meeting, which we had on the 22nd. As you know, I see plenty of planes, you know, five times more, how many times more cars. It's just, we live in a very mobile society, and it's often said, the house that I grew up in that had one car today would have four cars, and the high school that had a parking lot that was hardly even used is absolutely jammed today because it was the first thing every kid wants when they see, you know, it's a car, and just... One of the previous speakers talked about Curry. It's a beautiful part of our community, but it's a booming school to what it was when we moved up there 30 years ago. It's just so... And these are all the things that we have to deal with. So, a lot of what this meeting came out with, there's a couple of new changes. We spent a lot of time, we've been spending a lot of time, both in Central and Milton Village Business District and East Milton. East Milton, you have the Howard Steit Hunts Report, and you also have the new deck project sitting before you. So, we've realized that the squig gets an inordinate amount of pressure every day. So, we've realized that the squig gets an inordinate amount of pressure every day, I mean, it just, and we're trying to correct, and even though we're a zero-budget operation, we're trying to correct and alleviate some of the issues while creating some improvements going forward there. So, in tonight's recommendation to you, we're recommending a change with the addition of a new section in the bylaw that will create loading zones for both East Milton Square and Central Ave Business District. In both of those, we've dual-purpose them, the East Milton one will be valet in the evening for the two new restaurants, and the evening one in the Village and Central Ave on Elliott Strikes, I say Central Business, but it's actually on Elliott between Brook Hill and Morton, is to give some 15-minute pickup-drop-off parking, specifically three spaces for Tino's, the liquor store, those businesses that are open at night, but they're not open as late as stealing, because as we all know, stealing ry places a lot of pressure on the Central Ave Business District each night, particularly on Thursday through Sunday. So, we've done that, and we've also made some changes around the side streets, around the square, particularly Church Street, because Navara's becoming, and there's going to be additional parking lot that isn't there now. We want to limit the access of cars leaving there, particularly at night, so they have to go away from the neighborhood, not into the neighborhood. And as the member of the press from Milton Times who was at the last meeting saw herself, we spent a lot of time on this. We didn't just kind of like go through this, we looked at it as a whole. You don't have to walk the square for very long right now, particularly in the heart of East Milton Square, to realize that we have the opportunity to put a dramatic positive impact on the infrastructure there. And I think this is, we're just trying to help move that along forward, so it's a few, a couple of things that don't have to be done, that we can do now, so they're ready once, like, say, the restaurant opens, and once this project is done. The only other thing that's on here that I didn't mention, that is not in the report, but I will tell you that we talked a lot about, and Mr. Hurley and I have talked about this, and I've brought this to the board, is on the 13th, I'll meet with Chamber of Commerce, and I believe it's on the 22nd, we're going to have another Traffic Commission meeting. Is it the first, I think it's the first day of town, whatever the first day of town meeting is, just, I think we're going to have it like at 5:00 from 5:00 to 4:00. And that meeting is specifically to address, as was noted in the Howard Stein Hudson East Milton Parking Report, the installation of pay stations in the two-town lots, which are Alpha and Bravo now, which is the Long Granite Avenue, and the lot that's the, I call it Upper Milton Food Mall, which is the town, Milton. And we will then designate, if the deck is built as proposed now, that lot would then be designated as Town Lot C, and we would want to begin the phased implementation of pay stations, not meters, and not on street parking, but pay stations for the efficient turnover of parking on those three lots. And these are things that you see every community doing, Dedham just revitalized the whole downtown, they did it in their lots. It's all over the city of Boston, Cambridge. We think it's the most effective, and I don't say this in a way, I don't, like, we're talking about the money a little bit, that's your decision, I don't care about that at all, but it's the most efficient way to flip parking over and keep it moving. And one of the things, and I went back and reviewed it again today, the East Milton Report just briefly, and it talks about the violations, and how some people will go two-hour spaces and go four, and the only way to really do it now is keep someone on a constantly chalk the top, it's antiquated to what almost every community in this country is moving towards. And as you heard, and I know I'm talking a lot, when I spoke at the hearing at the deck, I understand that the people who live there, around there, are looking for relief, and that the residents who have businesses there, that's their livelihood, and I don't think this hurts either one of them, I think it helps both of them, and I think it helps the town. So, that's the only thing that's not in this report, but will be specifically addressed. I'm going to go, Bill's arranged for me to go before the chamber on the 13th, and I know they don't want, but sometimes, this isn't a political decision, this is an operational decision for the betterment of the community, and then we will then, and they will, you know, we'll explain the whole thing, if they want to come back on the, to the Traffic Commission meeting, and address it, I'll have a rep speak as well, I'm fine with that. But I do believe, just in the polling of the members, is that there's a vast amount of support to do this, as you move this project forward. This, you, this is a big opportunity for you.
Right. I suppose, whichever way the decision of Traffic Commission goes, if it goes in favor of it, at least it's only in the municipal lot, so there still will be plenty of free parking in the square.
Absolutely.
And it's a good way to do it on a test basis, to see.
And you still offer, and one of the other things that you offer, particularly for the businesses, and I can't find this anywhere else, is the service zone parking, free parking from police. I mean, if you work in Boston or Cambridge, you don't get to park for free.
Right.
You pay, and they get to park for free, you know, morning or night, and the only other, there'll be a change to that this year, is we're breaking the square and the Central Ave Business District and the Village into two zones. So, if you want to work in both zones, you have to buy two stickers. Just a little bit of abuse, we found in it, so we want to tighten it up a little bit. And as you see, Central Ave has just changed, and still potentially could change even more, so, that's the only other thing that we might just, big change. What, you want to go up? We'll do that later. Okay. So, other than that, that's pretty much where it's, so I have some recommendations, and...
Okay. I do have one question. The service zone, I mean, loading zone services, three spaces in each?
Three spaces, so that's 60 feet, and we went a lot, we looked at the whole, because John Thompson had actually thought, distance-wise, it would have been easier to put it on the Dunkin' Donuts side of the street, but if using the dual-purpose valet, our feeling was very dangerous, because...
Right, you have to cross the street.
Yes, it's an unnecessary crossing, it's just two.
Yep.
So, by putting it in those three spaces, a truck backing in actually has the ability to use the T at Franklin Street, because of actually, as he's backing in or she's backing in, because you're right in an intersection, so that was why, and we really want to get these off of Church and off of Franklin, which is, they're doing it illegally now, they're just parking anywhere, just making their deliveries in.
They get an extra 20 feet because of the street that they don't have if they use the other side.
Yep, I understand. Okay.
So, we would have to take four spaces if we went on the other side, as well, as well as the crossing part.
Okay. That makes sense. And similar, the Elliott Street is going to be similar, that's going to come out to an intersection as well?
Three, two intersections, both Morton at the head end and Brook Hill at the bottom. So, ideally, at Brook Hill, they should, at the Central, Elliott Street one, they should be able to pull vertical right up to it. And the only other thing that came up in the, going back to the East Milton one, is the businesses that utilize these bigger trucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks, the New Restaurant, Abbey, they're going to, we want their deliveries to come from Quincy. So, we don't want them coming off, going through Milton, we want them to get off Furness Brook, whatever, come up Adams Street, and make that Quincy delivery, come into Milton from the Quincy side.
Okay.
And this will take a little bit of education, but this is an amenity for them, I mean, this is going to make their lives a lot easier.
Sure.
We know that they have to call each one of their vendors and state that we have a new loading zone, don't park on Franklin Street. We'll aggressively do the enforcement over there to make them get off of Franklin Street, they have to be on Adams Street.
Makes sense.
And a lot of them use the same, so we want them to do their multiple deliveries at once, if they can?
Right, yeah, with the same ownership, basically, of the two restaurants, yeah, that makes sense.
I have a question regarding Elliott Street, so daytime will be loading zone, nighttime will be the 15-minute pickup, what about, are we still looking at the residential area for the impacted folks who don't have a driveway, who are impacted by stealing ry?
Tim, and Tim has done, and I just sent you a pretty extensive breakdown of just all our spaces, it's kind of like a mini East Milton, because East Milton took, tomorrow is, they're going to, we're actually assigning a kid out with him, and once he gives us the data, now, we've broken down the space by like, what's two-hour, what's one-hour, what's service zone, now it's going to be who uses what one. And so, we are looking at that, but we're not ready to report on that yet. I will say, though, that East Milton came to the last meeting looking for residential on Church Street, and I've said this many times, I just think if we ever, we need to be very, very careful if we open it. So, we're finishing Elliott, we're finishing Central Ave right now, but as you saw in that conference, I emailed, Tim wrote the other day, to me, it's, he's done a lot of work in this. So, the other thing too, as I've said to you many times about Central Ave isn't even done, Hendry's is, you don't know what's, you know, that's the unknown here. If it's the 40B with the 50 units, that's a bigger issue.
Sure.
If it becomes mixed use, and you're able to gain some parking out of it, that takes some of the pressure off of that area, but anyone who drives there through there now, I mean, there's a lot of pressure on there right now, so that's why, I mean, he's done his due diligence, he's been a good gentleman.
Okay, so we'll have more to report on that later.
I would say, we want to have that recommendation to you on that by November 1st.
Good. Great. And the only other question I had, Chief, was the right turn only coming out of the new restaurant parking lot, which makes sense, that is a very slow light at the top of Church Street, very slow. Is there a right on red at that light?
When did you do it last? We fixed it a little bit.
Quick?
I believe there was right on red at that light, there's not, yeah, there will be a right on red, I don't think there's, I'll walk, but I don't think there will be.
There used to be, the right on red came down, and that light also is now quicker than it was before.
Okay.
We did, after sitting there multiple times, it's like, we went back and found, you know, why is it like that? Well, we did it, and there were some reasons, and it's like, all right, ease it out some, because it's too long, I mean, way too long.
Get people falling asleep.
Uh-huh. Yes. But no, they did fix it, and they did release a lot of it.
Okay. Okay.
We don't want to get it so that it becomes a cut-through.
Right.
But we did fix it so that it, you don't go to sleep.
Okay. Good. Anything else? Got a bunch of motions in?
I'll move that we approve the recommendations of the Traffic Commission as follows. Article 5, Section 10(c), Adams Street, designate a loading zone 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the northerly side of Adams Street, extending easterly 80 feet from the intersection of Franklin Street, and to designate that same space as valet-only, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. At Elliott Street, to designate a loading zone, 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, on the eastbound side of Elliott Street, between Brook Hill Road and Morton Road. Article 5, Section 7(a), Elliott Street, to designate the loading zone on Elliott Street, between Brook Hill Road and Morton Road, as 15-minute pickup-drop-off, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Church Street, to designate the parking spaces on the odd-numbered side of Church Street, from the corner of Duggan Lane, to the No Parking Here to Corner sign at the intersection of Adams Street, as one-hour parking. Why don't we, I'll end the motion there, because we haven't talked about the others yet.
Okay, so I'll second that. Okay, motion, move, and second any further discussion? Seamus Oles in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Can I just touch base on Church? So, the reason what we did is, when we looked at Church between Duggan Lane and Adams Street, it was all chopped up, it was different, and now the two houses are gone, so we just standardized the whole thing, and you actually, I think, we gained at least one space, if not two spaces, out of it. So, some was not regulated, some was no parking, some was parked, we just took the whole thing and regulated it all the same.
Okay.
Do you want me to touch on the next one for a minute?
Maple Street?
Maple Street? Okay. So, I know there's been a series of emails, and I'm going to give you this, the re-designed version. For years, in Milton, we don't have a Quincy station, North Quincy, but we do have four trolley stations on the high-speed line between Mattapan and Ashmont, Cape and Valley, Central Ave in Milton. Did I miss one? I think that's it. Public transportation is a big deal now, it's used immensely. 20 years ago, the only parking lot that was down there was the one that you have the air rights to, which is under your piece of the property, and that kind of took you everything. Shortly after that, is, pressure started to increase. The first project that I ever worked on was with Paul Cantor, and under when Kevin Murn was chief, was they took the parking lot of the old police station at 36 Central Ave, and that was converted to 47 public spaces, and was a breakdown between taking care of the commuters and having the first service zone parking. Everything else in those days, like even the Woff, Woff Street on the right, the lot you have on the right, the down at the, no, that was regulated, people just parked as they wished. The demand is that big now that all of it had to be regulated. When the police station lot was sold, I believe to Hood, we lost that. The traffic, it looks like the Traffic Commission at the time, based on all these drivers now going to look, parking Oak Valley, Maple, Rockview, Morton Road, codified it all. It looks like the first votes were 7A to 7P, two-hour parking, and the two-hour parking was to, we've, as I've noted in my email to you, is that we, our officers chase, have chased as many as a pack of 30 cars a day trying to park in a 3A route to take. Maple Street was designated 7 to 7, it's been that, but it was down to one sign. You took, you and I both took a series of complaints dating back to June about cars parking there all day, it was true, we investigated, some of those far away as still. So, all we did here was, because I couldn't find the codified, and these 7 to 7 signs are there everywhere, and this was probably done way before computerization, and I take it, it was probably one big vote that went along with when the police, when we lost those 50 spaces, that's just my gut feeling on it, because the signs are all the same. We just reaffirmed the Maple Street as two-hour. Now, I know they put a lot of signs up, and I don't know if I would have put that many signs up, I don't know if we needed that many signs, but I'm, we just, we took the vote because, as I've written to all the residents, there was no way for us to enforce it without signs. So, it's been two-hour, so we actually voted again, just so we could go on the record and have another vote on, to make Maple Street two-hour. And if, and as I said to one resident, if we took it away, they're still going to park on your street, because Maple Street's so close, you'll just duck right down, walk right down, get on Central Station, and you're there all day. So, we don't, we don't, you know, we understand people living in their homes, we don't, very rarely we would tag a resident in front of their home, or guests, or things of that nature, but in that neighborhood, the commuter pressure is just, that's, that's the reason why we're going to break the zones, the service zones into two zones, because technically, if you worked in a business in East Milton, and you went to school, say, you could go to Central Ave, park in a service zone space on either Elliott or Brook Hill or any one of them, jump off the train and go in town all day, come back, and you park for free.
Yep.
So, we're going to two zones, a zone for the Central Ave Law Mills, and a zone for East Milton.
Different color sticker or something?
Yeah, just, just, look, it's 15, it's just, and the MTA has a pay lot there, it's only like...
Five bucks.
Five dollars for the day, it's not like, it's not crazy, it's just, so, we didn't do this in any way, shape, or form to target those residents, we did it to kind of leave a complaint that was, kept coming forward to both, to this building and to us, so. So, that's why that gets you to the next vote, we want to just reaffirm what we think was such a long vote, so long ago, and they say, I'm only basic, because the signs are all the same, all in that area, 7 to 7, and we don't, we just vote two-hour, and we don't do time very often, we don't, we just go two-hour.
Period, yeah.
Period.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Well, I'll move Article 5, Section 7(b), Maple Street, that we install two-hour parking signs on both sides of Maple Street, between Central Ave and Oak Street, and also move on Article 3, and do you want me to wait and get to that?
The Dean Road part of it?
Dean Road.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, so let's just get Maple out of the way, maybe.
Yeah, okay, so I'll move on that.
Second.
Okay, motion, move, and second any further discussion? Seamus Oles in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, Dean Road?
So, Dean Road is just a replacement sign that, so we just want to vote to put a new one back up there, it's a dead-end string.
Simple enough.
Okay, so, I'll move that we approve Article 3, Section 1(b), Church Street, install a right turn only sign on Church Street at the exit of the parking lot of Navara Restaurant, and also Dean Road, install a dead-end sign on Dean Road at the intersection of Clay Street.
Second.
Motion, move, and second any further discussion? Seamus Oles in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Chief, I just have one other comment, and that's with respect to the new restaurant in the, and now you're going to have valley parking for both Abbey Park and, I suspect, and Navara.
Right.
Had, we ever considered, because I suspect those service-owned spaces are not used much at night, as designating those as valley parking spaces in the evening?
I know that in Central Ave, stealing ry uses that, because there's just the pressure on the service zone isn't at night what it is during the day.
Right.
So, we've talked about this with the Traffic Commission, at least from an enforcement point of view, we'd have no problem with that. I mean, we want to get, we don't want them in the neighborhoods, we don't want Church, we don't want Frank, we don't want Ambassador, so the service zones that are on Adams, Granite, we're fine with that.
They also, they also have, because of Abbey Park having its lease through Citizens Bank, they also have rights to park at the Citizens Bank parking lot after hours.
Right.
So, there's another, so before they have to cross the expressway to get to those service-owned parking, they could hit those ones first.
Mm-hmm.
So, they've got, you've got behind for Franklin, you've got the 25 at Church, and you've got Citizens Bank.
But clearly, you'd want to keep them out of the rest of the square, too, so that people can go to Mr. Chan.
Absolutely, can do that.
Right.
Well, Mr. Chan has an agreement with Santander, so...
Is Mr. Chan's, is there going to be, that was the only thing, did I, is there a change before you, Sue, coming?
Well, they have the legal license, it hasn't been...
They do have it, that is going there.
Their lawyer is preparing the documents, and is supposed to have them... Their lawyer is preparing the documents, and is supposed to have them ready today.
So, they're gonna go to a seated dining type, like a great child type?
A little bit smaller than that, but yes.
Yeah, that's what that storefront that they acquired, that they really haven't opened yet, right?
And then they can take some of what they have on the other side and incorporate, yes.
Just finally, on the, on the discussion items, I've had several meetings with East Milton Neighborhood Traffic Commission, their Traffic Association, Peter Dunn. I've also, Lieutenant Albin and I have had several meetings with Mike Zulis and his, he has a Public Safety Transportation Committee for both buses and walking to school. We've walked the route, we've looked at, I know that he had had requests about crosswalks.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about that one.
So, these items that are in discussion were referred, several, to John Thompson. Several of them are on crosswalks to go in the East Milton neighborhood. One of them is, and I'm troubled by this, and I know my conversation with the White Sox, we've had requests for both Pine Grove and Squonam and Hope for crosswalk to connect from the Hope Ave side to the Antwerp Church Street side. The danger, his body racks, the danger is the roll coaster layout of the road.
Well, can I just interrupt you on that, because that, the resident who contacted me about that, this is someone who lives in the Hope Ave Cedar Terrace Street neighborhood, who in.
It's a disability or handicap.
Yes, but in walking the neighborhood, really, because the cars coming from Quincy are coming down that hill pretty quickly, and cars that are on Granite are turning right onto Squonam, are making that turn sometimes very quickly, anyone crossing the street there from the bottom of Cedar Terrace at Squonam to try to get over to Antwerp Street at right opposite, is, the request was for the crosswalk there to, to make it easier for people to cross that street without, you know, potentially getting hit, because the cars are either going at a faster rate of speed or coming down that hill pretty quickly without a lot of visibility sometimes, so, and I know you can cross at the intersection of Granite and Squonam, but, you know, for elderly or a disabled resident or someone, it would be helpful to have a crosswalk at Cedar Terrace. And I know you were looking into that, so I appreciate your thinking.
It has to meet the requirement, that's the whole, and I.
The sightlines there are horrible. You can't see, between the hill and the curve, there's no sightline there, and if you can't have the sightline, you can't put in the crosswalk. You can put the crosswalk down, but if I'm coming down, I can't see that crosswalk. Coming up the hill on the other side, I can't see that crosswalk, it's up on the top of the hill. It's not doing me anything. You can put up the signs, but they start looking for it, where is it? You can't find it, because it's going to be at the crest of the hill.
That's the danger.
Can you put a signed crosswalk at the top of the hill so that people will be alerted to it?
We're gonna find out, because we've asked John to look at all three streets.
We actually asked him to look at the counts up there, too.
Counts, speed, and both Antwerp and Squonam, which is the first one, Pine Grove, Church and Squonam, and then Open, and see if any one of three, and it's not, believe me, it's not about not wanting to help the resident, it's only about because of the criteria on the meeting of the warrant on crosswalk and stop sign installation, it's just so strict. They basically tell you, if you don't meet the criteria, and so, it's on you, and I've said this, that was the biggest.
Meaning the state, the D.C.R.
No, it's actually, it's on the town, it's on us, but you have to meet the state M.U.C. T.D. warrant, which comes out of Chapter 90, which glaze out all the specifics on sight, sightlines, ability to stop, and I knew as soon as you said it to me, when the first day I went there, I'm like, oh, because I saw this, and I'm like, this is gonna, because if you recall, when I was first chief on the first, was, we out of the, Spaffinett Island in Buckingham. The original plan was to do Clifton as well. Clifton was eliminated because the downgrade coming from the top of the hill was so steep, it didn't meet the warrant, so one up only two, so, and that's a quarter downgrade that, but whatever we can, and that's why I said to you, Mass starts looking to completely redo the intersection of Granite and Squonam, which definitely needs to be done, just cut through, it's a, it's a east-west cut-through. If there's any way we can include this and have their engineers kind of help us in finding an alternative, I'll do that. I just, I wish I could give you, come back to you with a quick fix, it's just, it's really a public safety issue, it's the reason why we can't just say, okay, we're doing it.
Thanks for looking into that.
But we've given it to John, we gave it to John, and just the last thing on the enforcement issues, we have had daily efforts, we run, break it down by street, we move it around from street to street, and we understand that the cut-through pressure there that goes through, and I think the residents are seeing a big approval of that. And once you finish this project in the square, we'll even make it, you'll get your walk in it, like, we realize, the squares, the square in the center have truly changed, and they require a different attention from us, and a different partnership, and we're willing to make that, and I think these improvements will only help that for all this, and I saw the presentation that they brought before you last week on this new change, and I think that's great as well, but I think it's, it's more of a park in this than, as you've seen, so I like that a lot. And that's pretty much it, that's, but we will meet, so we'll meet with them on the 13th, and we'll have them on the 22nd, and I expect to have recommendations to you on both the parking issue we're working on with a decision, or recommendations one way or the other, and on the pay stations. And I reached out to Thomas Chea, and I put a capital request in, just to be prepared to start, to look at purchase of three of them for this year. So, we kind of keep this, don't lose momentum, this whole thing, and just kind of keep it going together, if that's okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess you want for the next agenda, if I can see.
How did I get this?
A quickie.
You know, I got it.
Mema? The Mema budget, yeah.
I got it, I brought it with me. I do want to say that, as we're sitting here, I was just outside, and I think 12 of them, 12 of them were outside, working in the dark, and that green shadow back from the auxiliary fire emergency management, working on a new piece of equipment, they got from a grant today, a new, and I've repeated this many times, and when I was younger, when I was a kid, Mark Williams was in the auxiliary police when I was in high school, and auxiliary police was a much bigger thing in those days, but policing changed so much, it's, auxiliary police forces are very small in how they're used, but from emergency management side, those people are really unsung heroes, what they do, what they go out there, every Tuesday night, every event, they're there at the half marathon on Sunday, every time we ever want them, you just, when we have an L.E.P.C. meeting, when we have an emergency preparedness meeting, A.M.R.E. had the snow summit, down in Plymouth, they wanted to come to that, and they're really a credit to this town, and I'm really honored to have a relationship with them that I have had for so long.
You can let them know that in our, in our.
Boston Pris.
The Massachusetts Emergency Management Association.
No, they've been up great.
Oh, they don't like that, they, they.
They don't have that much money.
Oh, yeah, I wish we had their money.
Yeah, that'd be nice. They are a great group of volunteers.
So, their budget is minimal. The only change going to page five is, Section G, we added $320 to the uniforms of the auxiliary fire on the contingent budget to make it equal with auxiliary police. That's it, that was the only change in it.
Okay, so I'll move that we approve and forward to the Ward Committee the F.Y. 2017 budget for the Massachusetts Emergency Management Association. The amount of $10,935 for a contingent budget and $10,615 for a non-contingent budget.
I'll offer a friendly amendment just to change Massachusetts. And then we'll, and then I'll second it, if you accept that.
Is that your recent budget in the year?
Yes.
It is, definitely this. Yeah. Okay, motion made, second any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you.
And we'll be back in a couple weeks, all right?
Thanks. I'll see you tomorrow morning.
I'll see you in the morning. See ya. All right, take care.
Page 8 is a conference with Planning Director William Clark on his quarterly report.
Okay. I'm going to give you what has been going on for the last three months. This is all through last Friday. I give you the planning stuff first, the planning board stuff first, and then some of the other major projects, not under the planning board. Under these first projects, these are also new growth. New growth is something that we look at every time we have to go out to Pond, every time we look at our own projections. Presently, there is a definitive subdivision application before the planning board, and it is nine houses on 3.6 acres. That one would get permitted sometime by the end of the year. 865 Brush Hill is, actually, I read that one wrong, it's 685 Brush Hill, which is actually five homes. They've all been, they're all under agreement, they're all in different stages of completion. I know one of them has somebody living in it, I think the second one is, they're on that verge, but they're all nice, big houses. We have a site plan approval for three new units within the Brushwood Estate, which is 333 Brush Hill. That should get approved Thursday night. That's for three brand-new homes within that development. It's a gated community, and it should build out that particular project. There are special permits before the board for their nursery, special permit for the agricultural nursery landscaping development. The board is deliberating that special permit now, hopefully we can get that done before the end of the month. St. Pius property, which is the 865, it's a development of 36 new planned unit townhouses, comprising of four affordable units. The development's currently underway, tree clearing has started, the roadway and utility layout is ongoing, and I would expect that the first foundations would be in before the end of the month.
Bill, do you have a sense of what their timing is on, for completion of the project?
About three years.
Three years.
Three years, to completion of the 36th unit.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be sale of the 36th unit. East Milton Movie Theater Building at 556 Adam Street, the restaurant management team and its contractors are working feverishly to open as soon as possible. I actually asked that question last night, and their hoping, open date is the beginning of December. That's fast-tracked, but they are getting things done pretty quick right now.
I do know their, their legal license is gonna come back before us, because there was a little change in ownership, apparently, that we have to vote on again, so that may slow that process down a bit, I don't know.
Building's gonna keep moving forward.
Is it gonna be on for the 20th?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. 450 Granite Ave, the Falcone Companies purchased the building, and they will be leasing the entire building as of November 1st. They have increased the size of the building by 2,500 square feet, so it's, by putting in an elevator, they get to almost double the size of the building, without increasing the existing building's footprint.
There's enough parking, yeah? There's a lot back there.
I need parking in the back. They actually are going to be working with Dolan, so that they can help relieve some of the pressure when Dolan has a very big funeral. When they finish with the elevator in the back, they'll be flattening out the rest of that parking lot, and they'll open the gate between Dolan and this building, so that they have a shared parking lot. That should.
That's great.
Ease some of that pressure for Dolan in the afternoons, and that building won't really need it at that time, at least that amount. Some of the other projects that we have going that aren't under the planning board umbrella, the East Milton parking project, the deck project, is working very closely with Mass Department of Transportation. They're working very closely with Federal Highway, and we're trying to put all those pieces together, and as soon as I have more, I'll come back with it. I know that we have John Thompson and Jack Calabro going in there tomorrow to talk about the utilities part of it and the right-of-way. They'll also come back with some of the other comments coming out of Mass Highway and Federal On the 40B, I've been working with the, with Town Council on the Randolph Ave 40B, the legal appeal. Yuleman Skating Rink, the rink opened Tuesday after Labor Day. The town has been given a one-year permit extension, and I work with Town Council to develop a one-year contract extension that went to Curry. Currently, they oversee the current management, and that leads to frequent discussions with D.C.R., Curry personnel, the rink users, and the public. There is a 25-year lease committee, the expectation is to have a complete business plan with the workable pro forma. The assumed forecast or informal information presented in advance of the actual or formal 25-year lease that we present. Wireless Telecommunication is a committee that is appointed by the selectmen. Recently, there's been an upgrade for T-Mobile over at the hospital. Extonet, which has a DAS system here in town, that runs on Canton Ave, Randolph Ave, Hillside Street, Houghton's Pond, and the State Police, they're going through upgrades on the existing I'm actually working with them, too, with Milton Cable, to see about having a fiber cable taken from the middle school to this building, so that they can help improve the TV access they have now. Animal Shelter Building, I'm handling the site issues for the selectmen property off Quarry Road, Quarry, Quarry Street. That means the wetland identification, the survey issue, and the utility locations. I have a wetland plan in hand, which actually Tim delivered to the, to that committee a couple of weeks ago, and the next step will be filing with the Conservation Commission. I'm handling the site issues, Tim handles the day-to-day, whatever the Animal Shelter Committee is dealing with. Sign Review Committee, there is, we're going through several renditions of new signage bylaw rewrites, and that's coming from the planning board and from the Sign Review Committee. All of that is ongoing. We've had two recent sign application before the Sign Review Committee, which both will come to this board. One will be shortly, and the other, we're still working on some of the plan.